Hey, good afternoon, everybody. It is Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two at five forty-five P. M. And I will call to order the Freetown Board of Select Meeting. This meeting will be recorded and the recording will be available on our YouTube page. We will be going into executive session and then returning back into open session. We will be going into executive session for the following reasons. Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A. One, to discuss reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints of charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. So would thou entertain a motion to go into executive session?
Motion made. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Selectman Loebz?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. We're now in executive session. Okay, we are now back in open session. First up, I'm gonna introduce the Selectment of the Night Essay Contest Winners. So we have Harper Benaka, how you say it?
Benaka.
Benaka, having trouble with that one. Erin Gomes, Sophia Mata, and Logan Olivera. So can, um, would, if you'd like, would anyone like to read their essay that led to you winning the contest? Harper, wanna start with you?
Um...
You don't have to, you don't want to, that's it.
Can I go last?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, let me do this.
Alright. Sophia, go ahead, please.
I am proud of my community because there are lots of fun places to go and eat. You can visit Harry's Diner. They have lots of good food like franchise pizza, tenders, and salad. I take dance lessons at Kara's Dance Center, and I've been dancing for six years. One of my favorite parks in town is Hathaway Park. It has jungle gym swings, bongo jump stand, rope climbing, and slides. During Christmas time, me and my family go for a drive around town and look at the Christmas lights and decorations. It makes our town so homey. I'm proud of the police department because they make me feel safe. One night, we needed to call them because something was in our yard, and they came very quickly and they searched my yard for a long time and made us feel safer. Our town is filled with fun and interesting places. One day, my family and I went to profile Rock. We looked all around it, and it was very cool to see the profile on the face. I also visited the Historical Society. They have lots of fun stuff to look at and learn about. I got to go in a one-room schoolhouse, a general store, and a blacksmith workshop. The town bandstand in Assomit Village near Grandpa's place is also a fun place to visit. They have Christmas tree lighting, strawberry festival, and sometimes even outdoor music. I really enjoyed my time at the Children's Development Center of Preschool. That is where I met my best friend Riley. I'm making so many great memories at Freetown Elementary School, too. These are reasons why I enjoy living in Freetown.
I had two, like, free fries. Great job. Would anyone else like to go?
Miss Coles?
Go ahead.
When people ask where I live, they don't usually know Assomit or Freetown. My dad puts it on like a muscle and points to them, "Look." They usually laugh at this map. Freetown is a town that I am very proud to live in. Freetown has a state-wide town activities to do. It is a fun place to explore with my family. The part of Freetown I live is called Assomit. There's lots of activities to do in Assomit, especially around the Fourth of July. On the Fourth of the Third, we always have a big barbecue at my uncle's house. We watch the fireworks across from the river. The next day, we always watch the parade for my uncles. We, and we spray water on the people in the parade. It is lots of fun. One year, I was in the parade and I got to throw candy, and my family sprayed water on me. When, when we went by with my baseball team, Assomit also has a strawberry festival. State Arts Fair, which is lots of fun. We can ride our bikes to both. We also went to see the bands at the bandstand during COVID. I enjoyed watching the bands play. Since I was little, I began to play T-ball. T-ball and playing sports were pretty late. I played soccer, T-ball, basketball, softball, and basketball. I love that Freetown has so many sports. The best part about living in Freetown is that people, is that people, a lot of my friends and family live here. I really love going to Freetown Elementary School and going to Miss Freetown Elementary School next year. These are the reason why I like loving living in Freetown.
Wanna go, or it's up to you, Logan? Alright.
I am proud of my community because I'm, everybody welcomes you to places. Sometimes I will go to breakfast places and they will welcome you. Some other reasons I am proud of my community are the schools. I really enjoy F V S a lot. I am excited to go to the other schools as well. Another reason is the parks. I've been going to them since I was very young. Another reason I enjoy the community is the cranberry box. I have one in my backyard as well. Another thing I am proud of is that I can take neighborhood walks all the time. Another reason I am proud is we have one police station and three fire stations. They keep us safe all the time. Another thing I have, I am proud of is of the resources like forest, water, and soil. This is why I'm proud of my community.
Terrified? You don't have to go, don't worry about it. We have some other stuff yet to do. Yeah.
Do you want me to read it for you?
Um...
You got it.
You can do it. Do you want me to help you if you get started?
How about this, we'll, we'll continue on. If you wanna read it later on, we'll let you read it later on.
Okay.
Alright, well, thank you guys very much. So you're gonna stick around up here and gonna help us vote on some very important items later on, okay? Alright, so next, um, we'd like to call up, uh, Mark Rogers and Kevin DeMaris and thank them for their lengthy service. Uh, Mark's fifteen years on the planning board and Kevin is twenty years. And we have, um, Representative Schmidt, Representative Fiola, um, Fiola and Senator Rodrick's, um, as representative, or representative from the office to present an award. So if you please step up.
What do you want to speak?
Just, you know, look good for the camera.
Well, let's turn off the camera.
I'm Kevin, so at least that's fine.
So, I am Maureen Estes-Stranigan, and I am the legislative aide from Senator Rodrick's.
And I'm State Representative Paul Schmidt. I represent Precincts Two and Three in, uh, Freetown. And Representative Fiola, who represents Assomit, Precinct One, wanted desperately to be here, uh, but she had a dental problem and felt that she couldn't show up with a front tooth missing. We'll call her tomorrow. I just wanna thank the Select Board for allowing Maureen and I to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's always an honor to be able to recognize individuals who have given such lengthy service to any municipality. And I know Freetown is very grateful for your service, as is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So it's always my honor as a Representative of Senator Rodrick's to present to you a certificate from the State Senate. This is an official citation. Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Kevin DeMaris in recognition of your twenty years of dedicated service on the Freetown Planning Board and your commitment to the town of Freetown. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested and a copy thereof transmitted to the clerk of the Senate. So my honor to give that to you and on behalf of Senator Rodrick. And it is also my honor, Mark, to also extend to you this official citation. Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Mark Rogers in recognition of your fifteen years of dedicated service on the Freetown Planning Board and your commitment to the town of Freetown. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk of the Senate. It's with great honor that I have the honor of bestowing that to you and thanking you again for your service. Don't go, because here comes Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Maureen.
You're welcome.
And I just wanna say that I think that local government is really, to me, the bedrock of democracy. Being able to deliver the services that we all depend on. Police, fire, schools, planning, public works, and so on. It's really the cornerstone of what our country is about. So it's just a great honor to be here with Maureen, without Carol Fiola, to present these, I have, uh, from the House of Representatives, a similar citation. And the first one is to Mark for your fifteen years of service on the Freetown Planning Board.
Thank you so much.
Mark, congratulations. And to Kevin. Thank you. I have a similar citation to Kevin DeMaris in recognition of your twenty years of service on the Freetown Planning Board. Kevin, congratulations.
Can we get a picture with all of us? Come on, real quick, that's my camera.
Awesome, we can go in, no side?
You'll look at this way.
Thank you. And then for you, Michael?
Sure.
You good, Norman?
Alright.
That light isn't gonna throw us off, is it?
I'm gonna give you mine as well.
Maybe we'll just slide.
Sorry, sorry. This doesn't happen, but once every twenty years.
We're gonna do it, my God, we're gonna do it. Especially Kevin and Mark.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much again.
Congratulations, absolutely.
Thank you. Just, uh, I'll just be very, very brief. I, I wanna say thank you to, uh, the folks here in, in Freetown for giving Mark and I the encouragement to run for, for Planning Board and to continue support over our careers. I, I listened to the, the speeches, and you're gonna do yours tonight. And, and a lot of the things that they touched upon, Mark and I and the other board, uh, board members feel a little bit responsible for relative, whether it's open space or, or other things. So again...
With the marijuana laws, you guys...
Right, right, right.
Right.
Right. So again, thank you for allowing, uh, letting us serve you folks. And, and again, we're always, we're always around, so if you have any, or any questions, you can certainly reach out to us. But I hope Paul's speech encourages folks to get involved, stay involved, okay? There's always openings, there's always town meetings, there's always a way to get involved, so. And you can hear from the kids, they really love the community, so.
We're gonna, we're gonna have a good future if that's what we're left.
We do. So, thank you very much.
Okay, great. So next, um, we'd like to congratulate the Tuesday Club on a successful strawberry festival. Did anybody here get to go to the strawberry festival? No? No, no strawberry shortcake, you guys? I couldn't go either. I wish I did, though. Alright, but congratulations. I mean, I don't know how many years it is in a row now, but, until the pandemic, but just always a successful, um, event. Alright, so now this is when I'm gonna need help of my, of our selectmen for the day. So we're gonna vote, and when I give a thumbs up, I need everyone to say yea or nay to, to closing the town hall, um, the library, and the council on aging, and the highway department for the Fourth of July. Now, do you think that they should be up to celebrate Fourth of July? Okay, I think so, too. Okay. So with that, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to, um, to approve, or to close the town hall, the library, the council on aging, highway department for the Fourth of July holiday on Monday, July Fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. So I have that motion?
Motion made.
Do I have a second?
You wanna say second?
Second.
I think I heard a second. Did you say second? Think so. Alright, alright. Now, all in favor? Aye. Alright, alright, you got it. Alright, that was the first one. We still mess these up all the time, we do it every, every week. Alright, great. Next, moving on. Now the transfer station. So I'll entertain a motion to vote to close the transfer station on July Fifth for the Fourth of July holiday as they are closed on Mondays. So do I have that motion?
Motion made.
Great, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor? Aye. Say aye? You wanna close the transfer, alright, yeah, we got it. Alright, great. Alright, so now, we, um, we're gonna discuss and vote whether we should approve the hawkers and peddlers license for the Third of July fireworks in Freetown to Nico's Novelty. So this is a license that they need in order to sell stuff at the Fourth of July. Toys, all kinds of fun stuff. So now, do you guys think we can discuss, you guys think we should allow this? Yeah?
You sure they allow it?
Alright.
Right, you sure?
And then, now, if we do, if, now we're gonna vote on this, and then I'm gonna need everyone's signature on here, okay? So this is gonna give them the license. Alright, so with that, so, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the hawkers and peddlers license for the Third of July fireworks, uh, in Freetown for Nico's Novelty. Do I, do I have that motion? You gotta say motion made. Oh, a second?
You wanna say second?
Second, alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, great. So now I'm gonna pass this around, so you, you have a pen? Alright, you gotta sign right above your name. Just write your name.
Write my name again?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we do. Pretty much, just all day, just write our names over our name. Awesome. Alright. Logan down there? Pass it down, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's official. Good job.
Okay, so then, next, um, we've had an official award for each of you for winning the essay contest. And it's been signed by all the board of selectmen. So each of you gonna have this, I want, I'm gonna pass these down, and then we'll take some pictures. Hold them these up, okay? Alright, so Erin's down there. Harper, right here, welcome. Logan? And Sophia? So how should we do this, you think? I don't want to cover up their faces.
Stand up over there?
Yeah, why don't we do? So how, um, so I, we both go on to recess to take pictures, I think so?
I would do it all in here.
Okay, alright, so let's go over here and take some pictures, does that work? We got high waters right now.
Good job, guys.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, guys.
Thank you very much. Uh, myself and Maureen would be happy to be in a photograph with, with you and the four winners. And, uh, which we just have citations to.
Oh, wow.
To welcome to Erin and Sophia.
You guys got a lot of paperwork.
Isn't that cool?
Isn't that beautiful? That's, that's a, that's a framer, right there. Do you wanna hold it up in the picture, it's hand, so you can do this, just like this? Okay? How's that? Harper, I'm going to give, this is a letter from Senator Rodrick for each of you. You know, when I was, when I was packing these up for you, I thought about when I was a little girl, very little, I wrote a letter to President Kennedy, and it was this size I got back from him that I couldn't refrain, and I still have it. And I'm old. I've kept it for a long time. So, perhaps, and Erin and Sophia and Logan, congratulations to all of you.
Can you see Logan? Yeah, Logan, come on up here.
There we go. There we go, perfect. Great job.
Before any parents leave, does anybody have an objection to the kids' pictures being posted on Facebook with the reps? If you have an objection, you can just let us know even privately if you want to, just before we post any of the pictures.
You are welcome. Don't forget about it.
I think that might be, yeah.
Do they want to grab your copies of your essays?
Tell you what, you can keep your knee. That's pretty cool. Put it on your wall, saying, "No dents are here," come like... Pretty cool.
What's that, what was that? Yeah, check that out. Yes, so... Okay, it's fine. Alright, so, once again, I'd like to thank, thank, uh, you guys again, you guys did a great job. I read each of them, they're really, really well-written. It's great to see how proud you guys are of Freetown. You know, I also went to Freetown Elementary School, and so, you know, someday maybe you can be sitting up here. So with, um, with that, I'm gonna entertain a motion for recess.
Motion made.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you guys again, appreciate it. Now, we are, uh, back from recess. Um, moving on, so next we have discussion of the Aponequid Junior Football and Cheer Organization regarding unauthorized use of long pond, road, football fields, pets in the field, and associated issues. So I'm assuming that's what you're here for. So we could, yeah, if you wanna just announce your name, just so...
Chris Whitting, President of the Aponequid Junior Football Program. I obviously spent a lot of time down there. And, uh, we did have, uh, some incident where they were training dogs. We figured out who that was, but then there was another incident where it wasn't them, and they were down there training dogs. So I just want you guys to know that I'm not running a dog attacks school.
We appreciate that, there's two separate occasions.
Yeah, so there was one sheriff down there training his dog.
Okay.
And then there was people down there training their dogs to, you know, obviously not be friendly.
Yeah.
And doing things on command, so I, I don't know. I do know that the field is still town property. We just lease it and sublease it, work with baseball, so, um... I didn't wanna just go putting signs up saying, "No dogs allowed." And before I had, the poop is getting deeper, shall we say.
Yeah.
It's, it's, I, you've dealt with it down at your field, you guys know. And talking to, uh, Jake, he said that you guys had put a barrel down there, and then the barrel turned into where people empty out their cars. So I, I completely understand it. People are more now, instead of taking it with them, they're just leaving it at the gate. And I probably go home with two or three bags at night. And it's kinda getting a little unfair to me, so I, I obviously would like to hear your feedback on what I can do. And then I have just obviously my suggestion to help, just, and, and it's not everybody. It's just a few people, but, you know, we're down there, we're doing conditioning now, three nights a week down there. You know, football's starting in August, and it's noticeably a lot now, to the point where like the kids are rolling, and I'm like... So, you know, I wanna keep them healthy, like what we're trying to do, so, um, I don't know.
Like, so it's my thoughts originally, like, I mean, I, I think a sign would, you know, that, that makes sense, right? If there's no dogs allowed on the fields, um, is that gonna enforce the same with the issue?
Probably not, I mean, signs only keep, you know, laws only keep honest people.
Exactly, that's, that's the problem.
It just, I, I don't know. I, I mean, at this point, like, like I was wondering if, if we could get us a barrel from the town.
Yeah.
With a small door. Like, to put it in and then have the guys empty it. One, it alleviates me taking it, which I wanna work with you guys, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Whatever, I'll do whatever it takes. I'll keep doing it, and I'll keep picking it up, but I'm just looking for a little bit of support.
Yeah, do you think the highway department would object to if we put a barrel down there, you know?
Chuck has been more than
He's always willing.
Open to putting barrels in. The biggest problem is just, yeah, just getting to find out about getting the trash picked up. Right, so that's something we're gonna have to work out with Borges.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I mean, Mr. Borges has obviously been supportive of whatever we do in the town, so, um...
I mean, I wouldn't even be opposed if you guys had it, and then, I don't know, I think the trash schedule is the same as ours. If that barrel was locked up and we, I don't know if we could get town trash bags, I'll even go down there, take it out, and put it at the end of the road. Like, I'll, I'll help, I'll do whatever we need to.
His house is beyond that, right? So, so Borges should be driving by there already, I mean, don't hold me to that, but I would think that they're driving by there already.
No, I think there's a lot of the trash picked up.
Yeah.
I think they put it all at the end of the road. They, they all bring it down.
They pick up at the beach as well, Borges does, yeah, we have camp down there.
So, okay.
So I guess we would just have...
We could ask them to just put a, a barrel at...
I think that makes sense.
I don't know if they have anything that's like small on the top, I know people will just throw their car trash.
Yeah. It's turning to cleaning car out.
We, we could see if the, I mean, the highway department might have something laying around, you know? Maybe reach out to them and then, and then, so Borges will pick up that trash, though, we think, is what we're saying?
He's been good with, with other times in the past, I know we've had put barrels out over the baseball field and stuff, so.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. It's not fair for you to have to take it down trash dump every day. And also, the, the dog issue, right?
I don't know how to fix it, I mean, I know at some point you guys were discussing putting a dog park in for people, like, you know? I mean, that'd be great, but it's not here now.
Exactly.
But, I mean, we're doing a lot of good stuff down there, and I'm not gonna let this, I just, it just had to come up, 'cause I was...
No, I agree on it.
Oh, sure. Even with, so you know, even with the trash barrels, you know, what we've found over the years, people are just picking it up and leaving it where they picked it up. Doesn't make it over the trash barrel every single time. Hopefully, it will, it will reduce the amount, so it's not as much of a nuisance for the football and cheer. It might still happen. I think in combination with the barrels and maybe even some signs saying, "No pets allowed," right? Hopefully, that'll, that'll deter more people. But again, it might not be a hundred percent. But if we get it down to fifty percent, you know, that's something that I guess strive for.
And it's also the other part of it, I don't know legally how it, this all works out. But part of the issue is, is if we start telling people that they can't bring the dogs on the fields, I mean, they're public parks, right? So I have a hard time saying that, you know, the lady wants to bring her dog down, they don't let her run around. That's, you know, just doing the right thing and picking up after the dog and being kind to say that they can no longer take the dog in. So I guess that's one of my issues, it's more of people respecting what they're using, right?
So, right.
I mean, giving them the proper bags and stuff to pick up, right?
Right, I believe they...
It's there, but...
Right, town provides the bags.
There's none in it.
None anymore.
No, I've put some in it a few times.
Okay.
It helped them.
Yeah.
It definitely helped.
I mean, I, I have dogs, and sometimes I've been in that situation where it's like... I mean, I, I have dogs, sometimes I've been in that situation where it's like, oh, I forgot my doggy bag, like, having them there definitely does help a lot. Having a lot of my dogs there though, just to be clear.
I mean, it is a good spot to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I just don't wanna say that we should ban.
So, yeah, I don't think anything really need to vote on, but we'll just talk to the highway department and, and see if we can get some other trash barrel, or trash barrel down there with the top, so, you know, and then make sure there's doggy bags in there, and then, you know, take from there.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
Yeah, and put an awareness campaign out there, let people know it's your dog, it's their mess, you're a problem, type of thing. We don't want to turn them into going outside and enjoying the fresh air, but at the same time, you have a responsibility to think about your, your, your pet, you know, so.
Alright, yeah, just keep us up to date, alright, alright, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Alright, moving on, so next is discussion about whether to approve the one day liquor license application for Thomas Chu Boys and Girls Club Inc., Camp Welch for the summer social on six twenty-five, twenty twenty-two. It looks like they presented and filed all the required paperwork, you know, the insurance and the safe, serve safe certifications and all that stuff. I went through the pack, it looks fine, any questions?
No, I'm ready that they're using that license.
Great, so I'll, I'll entertain a, a motion to approve the one day liquor license application for Thomas Chu Boys and Girls Club, Camp Welch, for six twenty-five, twenty twenty-two.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. Alright, next is to vote on whether to approve the contracts between the town and Free Town and ComStar, and that was one we're skipping right now. So that's gonna be moved to a different agenda. And that one is, okay, yeah, so next is discussion about what company to award the IT support contract for seven-one, twenty twenty-two, six-thirty, twenty twenty-four. And it looks like Metro Spec for IT services is the low bid there, and.
They're, you know, they bid, they bid as we asked them to by the hour.
Yeah.
The other bidder bid like a package that we'd have to pay for the whole package.
I'd like to, that was, it was, it was a lot.
It was different, yeah, so.
Just, not, not saying fiscally or financially a lot, it's just a lot, kinda confusing how it all worked.
Yeah.
You'd kinda rather keep it simple and have the straight hourly rate.
And that's how we asked it to be bid, so.
Alright, any, any comments, concerns, or questions on that?
No.
Alright, so, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the town and Free Town and Metro, Metro Spec for IT services from seven-one, twenty twenty-two, six-thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, is that okay the way I did that?
I think so, you're kinda combining two discussions into one.
I saw you looking at it.
I was thinking.
Worst case, yeah. Alright, agenda item fifteen, discussion about whether to have a special town meeting for joining Bristol Plymouth Schools and COA petition, and if so, where to host, and so, am I reading this correctly?
Uh, yeah.
So these two separate things?
So we got, we got a, so we know the issue, you know, the town has been trying to work with Bristol Plymouth Technical School to join the BP school.
Yes.
So that agreement has finally been approved by DESI, and gone to all of the towns, now all the individual towns need to be, to, need to approve this agreement, including Free Town. So that is one, but in the meantime, after we closed the warrant for the, uh, the annual special town meeting, we got a petition from the COA, so that has to go on the next meeting, whenever we schedule it. So that's just, there's really no choice, it's a petition article, it will have to go on, whatever the next meeting is that we schedule, so it's just on here. The big discussion is, so, the agreement with Bristol Plymouth needs to be done and complete by December. So my thought process was possibly have a meeting sometime in August to, to discuss this. Because i- if, if in fact it got denied, it turned down, you would have ample time to have another meeting and, and, and make sure that that's the way the town wanted to go, or you'd have ample time to look at other avenues if BP didn't get approved, if this agreement didn't get approved. So, if you don't feel like that's a concern, then you can just do this at the regular October special town meeting.
I know, I'd like to have a meeting before that.
Um, so that was, that was, that's just really it, and you know, again, trying to get as much information out there so people can be informed. So they might, because it's hard to really get information out in, in, in a, a lot, that you might have a lot of discussion at a town meeting, and you might wanna do it separately so that it's not, you know how much stuff we have to cover on a regular, on a town meeting. If you do it by itself, and then of course the COA, that'll have its own time discussion, so those two things, I mean, we might have one or two other things to add to it, but those two things will take ample time.
I can see both those being, like, I would even consider splitting those into two meetings, but you can't really do that. So I think one, one special town meeting, expect it to go three hours at least, for just those two items.
But I mean, you know, it depends on how much information we get out before then, and so people are informed and are ready to make a decision when they show up to town meeting. But that was my thought process, is that if something doesn't go accordingly, you have another, you'll have another opportunity in October.
Do you think mid-August?
I'm thinking mid-August, I've talked to the clerk, she's okay with that date, because of course a lot of this will fall on her and the moderator.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, that's, that's the other thing.
So I did check with them, and they're, August, we're looking at mid-August, yeah.
Okay.
And we have to have certain time too, to get stuff out of our office.
So how, so if I make a vote to vote on this, right, I, I might just make it vague enough where it's in mid-August pending the dates that work with the clerk and the moderator?
And we can come back with a date.
Okay.
I just, we, I wanted to open up that discussion and make sure that.
Yeah, any, any concerns or, guys, what do you guys think on this?
No, I think it's a great idea, getting it out of the way, well, not getting it out of the way, but getting it up front first, and if we need to go back to it in October, that, that's the case.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I think the big thing is knowing that if you're joining BP, that there's a ten million dollar, or a roughly a ten million dollar commitment because of the new school that will be built, so that's a big, it's, 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 it adds a little bit of discussion to the topic, right, that, how are we gonna fund that? And, and there'll be hopefully some more information coming for that.
Alright, great, yeah, so I'll entertain a motion to approve having a special town meeting sometime mid-August pending dates that work for the town clerk and moderator.
Motion made.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, agenda item sixteen. Uh, discussion about whether to stop charging for transfer ticket, stickers pending attorney general's approval. It's my view on this is that this was on the town special, annual town meeting, one of them.
Annual, yep, and it was, it was petition article, it was approved.
It was approved, I mean, I, I think the voters have spoken, and even though I don't personally agree with it, I'm not gonna get in the way of that.
Right.
Democracy.
It, it voted, it approved overwhelmingly at the meeting, so.
Yeah.
See no reason why.
Okay, great, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to stop charging for the transfer stickers pending the attorney general's approval.
Motion made.
I second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, agenda item seventeen, this is a discussion about whether to approve the use of the banned sand for ukulele program sponsored by the Cultural Council and Public Library on nine, uh, so September tenth, twenty twenty-two, from two to four PM. Any concerns with this? Anyone have a ukulele issue?
Uh, it's a beautiful instrument, I don't have any concerns with the, I think the concerns always goes back to that area, especially that two to four timeframe, there's traffic, I don't know, parking, are we talking twenty kids, are we talking, you know, two kids? I didn't see that in the notes.
Yeah.
How big is?
I'm assuming it's not gonna be that big, it's not gonna be that big of an issue.
And they, they can always go park down Water Street.
Yeah.
And also, yeah.
Yeah, well, for kids learning a new instrument, so.
Yeah, alright, so with that, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the use of the banned sand for the ukulele program sponsored by the Cultural Council and Public Library from nine, ten, twenty twenty-two, from two to four.
Motion made.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Uh, next is ambulance abatements and write-offs for May, the amount of, May twenty twenty-two, the amount of one thousand, sorry, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents, I'll entertain a motion to approve the abatements and write-offs.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, now, agenda item nineteen is discussion about whether to allow a permit for three weeks for a trailer to be utilized at nineteen Quantapug Road, East Free Town, Mass. So, this is, we have a bylaw that kind of prevents this in a way. I personally have no issue with it, I mean, it's a little unclear, I guess, where it stands, I think the bylaw is, it's in our packet. I don't see an issue, if it's not, you know, a long-term situation. Um, I don't know if you guys have any concerns?
No. No, it's three weeks, if someone, private property, it's one trailer.
Yeah, I feel like, sorry.
Just subject to that.
So.
Just subject to the proper septic.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so it will be, yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's going to be subject to, to the septic black water and gray water disposal required either by a contractor or septic system at, at another location, so, which is great, I think, indeed. Alright, so with that, so I'll, subject to this, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to allow a permit for three weeks for the trailer to be utilized at nineteen Quantapug Road, East Free Town.
Motion made.
Second.
Sorry?
On the front page of that, did you wanna state that, what date it was beginning?
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, it's beginning.
I think it's June twenty-second.
June twenty-second through, I guess for three weeks, starting June, yeah, twenty-second. Alright, so do I have that motion?
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, that's gonna be a choppy motion right there. Good luck figuring out how many minutes. Okay, and should I sign this now?
No.
No? Doesn't really matter, but yes. Alright, so now I'm gonna kick it over to, actually, so, yeah, personnel board, we do have a public hearing at seven, so I'll just give you, I'll just let you know when we have to.
Chip, kick me off the level, if you need. Uh, should be pretty quick, I don't see anything yet, it might take a few minutes. So, personnel board, item twenty, acknowledged the resignation of Lisa Pacheco from the building committee effective June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Anybody have any questions, concerns?
Nope.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge the resignation of Lisa Pacheco from the building committee effective June sixteen, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we're gonna skip twenty-one for tonight, right?
Yes.
Alright.
Item twenty-two, discussion about whether to approve the appointment of Jeffrey Chandler as facilities manager effective seven-one, twenty twenty-two through six-thirty, twenty twenty-three. Um, this also ties into number twenty-six, so, but, I believe we discussed this some, a couple of months back.
Yeah, so.
During the ominous budget meeting.
Yeah, so we're gonna split out, kind of, his, he has two kind of totally different jobs, gotta split those out in case, you know, we ever need to carve that out and have somebody else do one of those jobs, I think it makes sense. So, yeah, so I'll make that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, number, item twenty-three, discussion and vote whether to approve the raises for bylaw employees as approved in ominous budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-three. So again, this is a discussion made during our finance committee meetings, and they have, I believe they were all in favor of that. As far as the finance committee, no issues were raised, so this is just putting it into effect. Any, any questions, cons? No, alright, in that case, I will entertain a motion to approve the raises for bylaw employees as approved in ominous budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
I'll make that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda twenty-four, discussion and vote whether to set the pay rate for the per diem non-union senior clerk for conservation commission to be eighteen dollars, eighty-two cents per hour as of seven-one, twenty twenty-two. I believe this puts us in line with all the.
The union employees.
The union employees.
That makes sense.
In that case, I will entertain a motion to set the pay rate for the per diem non-union senior clerk for conservation commission to be set at eighteen dollars, eighty-two dollars, eighteen dollars, eighty-two cents per hour, effective seven-one, twenty twenty-two.
Yep, I'll make that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion number twenty-five, discussion and vote whether to set the pay rate for the per diem transfer station staff member to eighteen dollars an hour as of seven-one, twenty twenty-two.
Same kind of thing?
Same thing, all approved, all discussed, the ominous budget and brings it up to the, everyone else's rate, so everyone's in this.
Makes sense.
Same playing field.
Great.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to set the pay rate for the per diem transfer station staff member to be eighteen dollars per hour as of seven-one, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, discussion number twenty-six, again, like I mentioned earlier, the schools piggybacked off number twenty-two. This is a discussion involved with pay the facilities manager five thousand dollars per year, and this is broken down per month um, for oversight maintenance of town building as of seven-one, twenty twenty-two. So the total's five thousand, but this is broken down on the monthly, you know, five thousand divided by twelve months, so. And again, this was what we discussed during the ominous budget meeting and everything else approved by the finance committee and everything.
Yep, that makes sense to me.
Alright, so, that's the case, we entertain a motion to set the pay rate for the facilities manager five thousand dollars per year, monthly, for the oversight of maintenance of bill, of town buildings as of seven-one, twenty twenty-two.
Alright, I'll make that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Almost perfect timing, actually, a couple minutes, uh, so board of health.
Should I even start?
I mean, yeah, you have five, four, or five minutes.
Okay, alright, so, agenda item number twenty-seven, discussion and vote on vendors' ability to charge additional fees for town trash bags. So, right now, town trash bags, they're paying twelve dollars and fifty cents for the bags that they're selling, for, you know, for that amount. But then obviously there's credit card fees and fees to pay their employees, so, I think, one store in town I know already does slightly charge over, right? So, that's how this is all kind of brought up, I, listen, if someone comes up and uses a credit card, it's charging three to five, six percent to that company, so they're losing money to sell you the town trash bags. So, I guess the biggest issue is, do we set a cap on it, cause I don't have a problem with them charging a fee.
I think it would make sense just to charge, as long as that fee lines up with their, their credit card.
Yeah.
I mean, do we have the ability to do that?
I just don't, I don't know.
I think you can approve it, I mean, my thing is, if you, if they charge too much, people are gonna not buy them there.
Yeah, they're gonna go somewhere else, yeah, yeah, so, you're right, so that, the people will determine that, right, whether it's too much, so.
So to clarify, it's not the, the making of the bags, it's the charging of the bag at the local level, at whatever vendor, ABC.
Yeah, exactly, so right now, whatever you're paying for those trash bags is what that company that's selling to you for is paying for them, but then they're, if they're paying, you know, you're paying when you walk in and use your Visa card, and that card charges them five percent, they just lost five percent.
Point of sale fee for that transaction. Now, does the town sell trash bags, any of our, like, town hall or anything?
Yeah, you can go into town hall and buy them, but they, you know.
Right, I was just thinking for the taxpayers, the residents.
But this, this isn't even saying that every single person's gonna do it, in, in today's world, the convenience of being able to pick it up if you live on this side of town versus driving to a zone, again, you're gonna pay an extra fifty cents or a dollar, you're still gonna, you're still gonna save money compared to the gas.
Yeah, you may wanna cap it at ten percent, something like that.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I think it'll, it'll.
To your point, I think that if someone starts trying to charge twenty dollars and everyone else is charging thirteen, no one's gonna go to them, so.
Market, market will sort that out.
Yeah, exactly, so I guess I don't really feel like I need to put a cap on it, cause then it can get sticky down the road, something changes, so. So, do you guys have any problems with?
It, it just rubs, it kind of, it just feels wrong adding additional charge, trash bags that are getting thinner, easily more broken, uh, it seems like they're getting smaller compared to the twenty gallon, thirty gallon size that we buy, and then we're gonna, I, I get the point of sale issue at the, at the super, at the market, you know, whether it's the juniors or the Irving, but to pass it on to the consumer, I'm not, I don't feel comfortable with that.
I guess my problem is, is that you're passing it on to the consumer, but if you're not passing it to the consumer, you're passing it on to the person who's bringing them in, and not just that, you know, they're using their cash flow to buy those bags to put in, that's, you know, that's money out of their pocket.
I think, I think some might have some question. Yeah.
Uh, every time I go to juniors, it's not just for trash bags.
Yeah.
I spend a significant amount of money there on a very regular basis.
And I, and I think.
You see where I'm going?
Absolutely.
I don't go just for trash bags.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, and I, I mean, I guess, to, to the point that was brought up.
One more thing, the more you charge people to get rid of their trash, the more trash you're gonna find on the side of the road.
Yep. But, but do we set the price right now for the actual bags, or is that just like what it costs, right? We're not making any money on the trash, or maybe, do we do? But do we set the price right now for the actual bags, or is that's just like what the cost, right, we're not making any money on the trash, or maybe, do we do, but that goes back to the uh?
Yeah, that's how.
That's how we fund the, yeah, that's right, or at least it doesn't fund it, it offsets some of the costs of.
Yeah.
Of the trash removal, right, paying for porches and everything else, so.
Yeah, so.
Cravel, Cravel Hill.
Do you have any idea what that percentage is?
It, I mean, I I we could figure that out, I could, I think we've looked at that before, yeah, I don't have it off on on hand right now, but I know it's.
I think per year, we we to to make the bags, I think, cost the town, again, roughly forty eight, forty nine thousand dollars per year. I think that was the numbers for to make the bags.
Yeah.
So town logo on it and everything else, um so of course it costs much more than that to pay for the services and everything else, it's, I think, I believe it's close to a million.
Right, but quality, though, they were definitely gone away.
And that's, that's something, that's a, that's kind of a different discussion, right, but we all last, every time we've done this, we've had. One company that comes back to us with the proposal for it, so we're, we're kind of stuck, so everyone here is all shaking their heads, yes, like, oh, yeah, you know, they're getting thinner, they seem to be getting small. I don't know if they can get smaller because of the label gallon wise, so I guess technically they'd be breaking the water if they started making it smaller. But they're definitely getting thinner, we've had problems with color, we've had problems with the the logo being smeared, like smudged, and, you know. But unfortunately, we have one company who's saying that they can do it for us, so I don't, you know.
Yeah.
Unless anyone wants to open up a company and make a trash. Maybe beyond something.
Right.
But, yeah.
No, to to the residents' points, you know, most people would go to these supermarkets to pick up gas, to pick up, and they all bundle it together. Uh to make it one charge versus twenty at the credit card level.
Right, so the retail is.
Right, how how do we distinguish between, now, if you go in there, it's just a single point of sale for trash bags, I can see the argument, right, I think we all could. But when you're putting it all together, it gets very murky as far as how it's separated at the end of day. Um I don't know, I, it's a tough one, I, I'm for the businesses to to sell us things, and I think we all are, I don't think we're all saying that. It's also a convenience issue.
The more you charge people to get rid of the trash, the more trash you can find on the side of the road.
But for this vote, for this vote, though, it's for. We'll we'll table the the thickness and and the the millimeter for the bags, that's for sure, that's certain, we'll add that somewhere. But today's vote is gonna be for the additional charges, fees for the town bags at the point of sale level.
So juniors could make fifty cents per package.
Yeah.
Right, based on what the point of sale charge is that they get charged, so.
And I'll leave that up to.
Right, it's a tough one, it's, we don't wanna charge more with the bags.
To the point, I guess, is you have to almost look at it as it's a convenience thing, because you can go to the Town Hall where you wouldn't be charged an additional fee.
The town doesn't make anything out of that?
No.
No.
So our property taxes pay for the bags?
No, but I'm saying that the bags are gonna be the 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 flat rate, no additional fee on top of it, right, so if the the bags are twelve dollars.
It's a retail, so they should make a little bit here.
Yeah, and I mean, even at that, they're still gonna make a minimal amount, just to cover the.
Right, right, but if if the price goes up, I'm gonna say it again, if you make people pay to get rid of their trash, they're gonna find them out, okay. I'm not one of those.
Sure, no, I I think that's the ones for discussion down the road as far as the bags themselves, but for today's fees, at that level. Okay, fair is fair, uh they're paying the fee, um we just need to notify the residents as far as it's going up and letting them know. Do we have a minimum standard or max?
That's, well, I think, you know, we've brought up a good point that. The residents will determine what's too much, right, and I don't think most businesses around town that are starting to sell town trash bags are doing it as a source of revenue. They're just doing it out of courtesy for the residents and to hopefully get them to come in and buy, you know, their milk and whatever else when they're there, so.
You're absolutely right, cause Shaw's does sell it as well.
Yeah.
Shaw sells it and everything else, so you're really competing against the, you know, the bigger guys.
Yeah.
So it'd be, it it would be in their benefit to keep it as low as possible, so I would agree to that, absolutely.
So I mean, I don't know. Right.
Alright, so no vote due to that, you don't think?
Um well, I guess I'm gonna say that we make a vote, I'm I'm gonna entertain a motion to give the vendors the ability to charge an additional fee for the town trash bags.
Alright, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you.
Alright, so back, so uh now we have a public hearing, so um I'm just gonna read this public hearing notice, so notice is hereby.
Excuse me, Chad, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay. Sounds good. Alright, public hearing, seven P M, notice is hereby given that Adam Petty of five Bryant Lane uh Street, Sonoma, Mass. Has filed an application for a class three motor vehicles license for a site at five Bryant Street at Sonoma, Mass to be known as Petty's Auto Salvage LLC. Public hearing, uh to consider the above will be held on Tuesday, June twenty fourth, twenty first, uh twenty twenty two at seven P M at the police station community room, fifteen Memorial Drive, uh in East Freetown. Now, um I'll open the public hearing, um alright.
I'm I'm Dave Petty, I'm uh Adam's father, um I'm also the owner of the property, he's got a leasing from me. Over the route, get by his list and the care sheets from the newspaper.
Yeah.
I'd give it, give it shit, I don't know. I'll get closer, that'll be.
Yeah.
We've already been, we came through the planning board, and uh we got our special permits, we got our site plan, we're moving them, we went through it a couple of times, and they were one way or move it. And uh they were happy with everything, so um we're just here as the last uh step in the hoop jump through to get the class three license. And to answer any questions that you might have.
Alright, great, excellent.
So the scope of looking at this, I, you know, I spoke with the building inspector uh a handful of times, just to get a background of the facility, alright? Uh my understanding, it's um it's family run, sixty plus years or so, and then I believe your your nephew.
My son.
Your son, sorry, your son will not be taking uh taking on the the business as far as bringing vehicles in, breaking them down, the three bay garage or something like uh around there. And then um you know, removing the the materials from the facility, right? Uh there is no shredder in there, right, there's no anything else, from from, yeah, just I'm just going through it, make sure that I am clear what you're putting there. Um I I know it, but I wanna hear it from you as well.
Very quickly, come in, there's no, we have a department states twenty five vehicles, and we don't even hold that, they they turn them quick, the kids bring them in. They come in, they go in the garage, they take all the parts off they want, and then they go right back, they've got bins for some stuff, and then the other stuff comes out. It's doesn't usually a day, two days.
Sure.
They're all, they're all in the middle of while.
Are you scraping anything, making noises, propane tanks or anything like that, I just wanna make sure, again, we're quick.
General, we're in, but we were right next to the, we're right next to. Ten times.
Sure.
Any any little noise we make is kind of overwhelmed by them.
Yeah.
And I've and I've checked as far as complaints as well, over the last few months, past year, uh the only complaint I've seen was about tires. And from my understanding, that you guys took care of that pretty quickly, so I do appreciate that the the tightness and how quickly that was turned around, so that speaks volumes, so thank you. That was it, there was no complaints about noise or any pollution, and then I got, of course, we're concerned and more. In tune these days about that.
One thing, no, I think when the public hearing was posted, right, was it? There's a clerk error on R R N, it was for class two, but it's actually a class three, so I just wanna make sure that's on the public, on the record. Alright, and anyone else have any questions? Yeah.
I don't have a problem with giving the license, but you're also fighting XL, and it took the cars to go on over to XL to be scrapped.
Not anymore, you know, we got rid, as soon as XL started, all that stuff, about a year ago, we we stopped using them, and we now use Speedo over in Middlewell. We don't do any business.
Because I'm saying, you're having a problem with XL already, and you're just gonna feed them more, I mean, you already have the executive minutes and stuff, how the shredder is blowing stuff onto all the residents' properties. I mean, Jared sat there last week and told me that he talked to residents over there, saying that he talked to some of the residents, said they don't have a problem with XL. But did he show him this, the executive minutes?
I hear ya, not 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 the Jennifer today, but I understand, uh alright.
So you said you had uh agreement with who?
We don't have a for tires and farms, but he was he was taking stuff to XL, just closer to town.
Sure.
And they were giving a better price than Middlewell, he started Middlewell, so no longer, with all the stuff in town, what happened, any of the complaints. He decided not to do business with XL anymore, and now he takes it over, used to be the old towns, now it's called Speedo, the stuff goes over there now.
As as a board, we can't tell you who who can and can't do business with, but I I believe the the town residents will be very happy with that arrangement.
Can I ask in a butter?
Yeah.
Oh, you're in a butter, excellent, please, uh what what are your take, what's your take on this?
Uh Tom, Tom Charlie, number one Bryant Street.
Welcome.
Everything is, everything is great.
Same rules as Cape Town Aggregate, you know, during the day trucks go by.
Yeah.
Uh dark.
Yeah.
It's great.
Yeah.
No issues at all?
No issues at all.
No issues at all.
We like to hear that.
Yeah.
That's refreshing.
Literally, you see his building from our backyard.
Yeah.
It's like downhill, we can only see the roof and.
Yeah, no, it's beautiful.
Electricity's already on that.
Alright, great to hear.
Yeah, that's that's what we wanna hear, uh moving forward with, you know, all town decisions, we wanna make sure that not just the companies, but the people that are plugged in are happy. And make sure that they're doing the right thing for their neighbors, so, great.
I believe another butter, Terry Terry improved uh our recommendation there as well.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, couldn't get him out of his house.
That was good, it's a plan.
Okay, great, great.
We took a look at those before we we came here, the questions we had, and again, it's one thing reading it, another thing getting it from the individuals that live and work right there, that's what we wanna hear.
We all live there.
You as well?
Yeah, I know.
Fantastic.
Yeah, I. His phone goes that way, mine will go that way.
Does he help cut the grass? Does he help cut the grass?
No.
He's always knocking on the door.
The other, the other son sent somebody to cut the grass.
Alright.
Soon to be his job.
He'll be doing it from now on.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so with that, so I think that no one else wants to speak for the public hearing, right, so with that, I'll I'm gonna close the public hearing. Um and then next, we have just a vote on it, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the class three motor vehicle license for Petty Auto Salvage LLC.
Motion made.
Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set. Alright, so now, call it back in, yeah. Absolutely, have a good one. No, you you can.
Yeah, I'm short on mine, I know Niles will make me more if I want him.
No, so it's not waste of paper.
I get a lot of work to do.
I agree. Yeah, I can, I can ima, I can only imagine, so. Air conditioning's everywhere. Shh, they're they're all back.
No, I I'm not, so we can sign, so I have to bring you guys back in, so. We're gonna sign now, and then we will adjourn.
Welcome back, Jared.
Thanks.
Is this new, doing this way, I kinda like it.
Can I skate?
And and we can't look at it, just to make sure.
When Luann, she has so much spare time, she's gonna redesigning them.
So I shouldn't be signing?
What were you doing that on your vacation?
Uh you signed these.
You were working on your vacation.
Not me.
Oh, yeah, this.
Yep.
This is the I T contract.
This is the other here.
This is the pay rate for the senior clerk for conservation. This is for the per diem transfer station. Five thousand dollars for facilities.
The more we sign these, our signatures worthless. Saturate the market.
Alright, so this one, I guess Jared won't sign this. Okay.
You gotta write my quote down?
Who we can work?
Alright.
I need, you need my signature.
Negotiate the mind.
I mean, put them on there, boy. Yeah.
Yeah, they're great.
Lovely.
Alright, I think it's paid, fantastic. I don't know, Kim's signature's nice, look at it.
I know.
Flow. She can scratch, but. I'm gonna switch it up on you, see if you notice.
Is all she wrote. You are all set?
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.